Okay, so first item on the agenda is the election of the PC Chair, Vice Chair, ZBA Chair and ZBA Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
I will nominate Anne, Eve Waterfall as the Chair, and I will nominate Jane as the Vice Chair. No, Jane as the ZBA Chair. Mark, as I said, would be the Chair in this scenario, and I would be the Vice Chair of the ZBA. And that's the motion.
Okay, let me...
Yeah, that was a lousy way to say it.
Okay.
So which one is planning and which one is...
Planning? Let's see.
So Mark is Chair of Planning.
Yeah.
Eve is Vice Chair.
Yeah.
Me as Chair of Zoning and you as Vice Chair.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody second the motion?
Yeah, that's the motion. Second?
I'm second. Okay, Eve seconds. Vice Chair, right? Vice Chair?
Yeah. You're the Vice Chair.
Eve second, so take a vote. Yes.
Do you want to offer any discussion though?
Well, do we want to...
Is there any discussion?
Is there any discussion?
Has there been any discussion before this meeting about this?
No.
Honestly?
No.
I... No?
Kevin?
Mark called me and asked me if I had any agenda items to change. I said no.
Jane?
No.
As a...
And Mark?
You responded no.
I asked Jane if she would be willing to be CBA because I didn't want to do it. I just... This is my second meeting. I don't feel like I'm ready to be a Chair at this time. Down the road meeting, I could step into that, but I was hoping that someone else would be CBA Chair, and I asked Jane if she would do it. And she said reluctantly she wouldn't do it.
Okay, so for the record, who is the Planning Chair and Vice Chair being nominated?
Mark is the Chair. Eve is Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. Of the Planning.
Of Planning.
In ZBA?
ZBA, I'm the Chair and Kevin is Vice Chair.
Okay.
So any discussion?
No, I just had the discussion I was interested in.
So did anyone...
And you all went on the record saying you had no previous conversation of this, so...
Did anyone what?
I said you went on the record saying you had no previous conversation of this, so...
Did you have a previous conversation?
I haven't had a previous conversation.
Okay, just asking you to...
I didn't respond to the email for changes in the agenda, so Mark called me up and said, "Do you have any changes?" I said, "No."
Okay.
Okay. So shall we vote? I vote aye.
I'll vote aye.
Yes.
Aye.
I abstain.
You abstain?
You know, I have a question about that. In terms of terms, how does that work? If this is approved, it's been approved. But I mean, this is done on a yearly basis. So I just want that to be clear.
Technically, our bylaws, this can be done at any point. So we can do that at any point. The only thing that I saw in the bylaws is that the Select Board asks by May 1st to have Chairs and Vice Chairs nominated. So in that case, we do, but we can change it at any point. We have that ability.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Any other discussion? Changes to the agenda?
So Jane, I just think that we need to say the motion is carried if we've elected Chairs and Vice Chairs according to the board.
All right, so the motion is carried at 7:06 PM.
And there was one abstention.
Yes, well, Stacy abstained. Okay, moving on to changes to...
So Jane, I think I think I think I think I think over now.
Okay, good.
Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda next week? No changes?
No.
Okay. So now to approve...
Are there any changes to the minutes? I have a couple. I just have to find them.
Okay.
Changes to the minutes? I have a couple. I just have to find them.
Okay. Cool.
And anyone have any?
Yeah, Shenan, you took the minutes in the last meeting along with Jane. Do you feel that you were representative of everything discussed in those minutes or at the last meeting?
To be perfectly honest, I handed them over to Jane for her to make any edits she saw necessary, and I did not have a chance to read over them thoroughly thereafter.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. As you know, there were quite a few things left out of the minutes, and I asked you to put them in the minutes, and you did not put them in the minutes. So I don't want to get into a big controversial thing here because we just had an election. I want to try to keep this as positive as possible, but you left out a significant portion of what was discussed at the February meeting.
Okay, might I remind you that I'm volunteering to take the minutes now, which is not an excuse. However, the minutes only reflect a general idea. It doesn't go into specific detail.
That's not true.
Well, Stacy, then please, do you want some paper? You can do the minutes tonight.
That's what you said in the email when I asked you to add, when I asked you to add in an email specific information from the recording.
Okay, so Stacy...
I really don't want to have you overspeak me.
Let me explain something to you.
You did not put specific information in the minutes. When I asked you to do so along with the revisions Mark had emailed you, you did his revisions, but you did not do mine saying specifically the same thing. If you want to do the minutes, do them yourself.
Let me...
That's what you said.
Can I explain something to you, please?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, first of all, the meeting was on a Tuesday night. I have until Thursday at 12 o'clock to submit the minutes. After that, everything is changed on the next minute. The recording did not come out until after I had submitted the minutes to Calista, which was Thursday morning.
That's not true. The minutes came out at 3 something PM on the day before. You just had to submit the minutes.
I did not submit them to Calista until the next day. So we can make changes to the minutes here now.
I would like to say something real quick. So at the last meeting, it came to everybody's attention that you guys broke the law. You broke the meeting law. Hands down, I checked it. Call BNTC, call whoever you want to. You broke the law. It wasn't in the minutes. I asked Stacy why it wasn't in the minutes. Stacy said, "I asked Jane to please put it in the minutes, and Jane told me, 'No, I'm not going to put it in. If you want to do it, do it yourself. I'll bring it up at the next meeting.'" So it's not the fact that you guys broke the law that I'm so upset about because you've done it before and you should do it again. What I'm upset about is you guys tried to cover it up. You guys did not put it in the minutes and purposely did it when it was asked and please put it in. You said no. So again, it's not the fact that you broke the law. It's the fact that you tried to cover it up, and it's not right and you guys need to be corrected.
Okay, Richard, I didn't cover it up. I didn't say no to Stacy.
You did. I have the email. All my emails are public knowledge.
You're talking over me now, Stacy. I said to Stacy that we can make changes. We can edit the minutes at the next meeting, which seemed the most appropriate thing to do, being that I had a day and a half to submit the minutes.
You know, I don't feel we're getting anywhere with, you know, discussing the minutia of open meeting law. And we all recognized, Stacy, that emails were causing a problem with open meeting law. And I'm not so sure we broke laws.
It's likely you did.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what we're even talking about. That's a big accusation.
It is. It is.
Sure, I checked.
But I'm not even sure... Okay, I'm not even sure what...
Well, I read it. I read it to you in the last meeting. I read it, quoted you what happened. So it shouldn't be a surprise. It is a large accusation. And I'll even go further to say, and you know, I really regret that this is happening because this is the last thing I wanted to have happen when I joined this commission. I wanted transparency in communication to allow us to heal our community. And what I am finding over the past seven months is it's getting deeper and deeper. There's a larger lack of transparency. And the best part of it all is is you guys are leaving me out of conversations constantly.
Can I remind you that I forwarded all of those emails to you
Yes.
to not leave you out of conversations?
After the fact.
Wasn't... Is there...
And I even said this, and this should have been... This should have been documented. This should have been documented in the meeting because at the last meeting, I said, because you had a conscience, you did end up forwarding those emails to me because you knew it was the right thing to do.
And you brought up the halls, which you have now a hearing coming on.
This is making adjustments to last month's minutes. I will read from last month's minutes that are recorded. I do not believe all of this information was in the final minutes submitted. If this would like to be resubmitted into the final minutes...
No, no, Sharon, Sharon, I'm sorry.
We have ability to amend the minutes. We have the recordings online for public review that captures everything, these recordings. So those are the opportunity for people to get significant information. But I believe that the minutes were reflective of what was discussed.
This has weight.
I would propose to, I would propose... I would propose to, first of all, move forward and let's have more of a culture of camaraderie here than division. So...
Just put in the minutes. That's all we're asking.
Yeah, that's all I asked is to put it in the minutes.
That's all we asked last? So... Just put in the minutes. That's all we're asking.
Yeah, that's all I asked is to put it in the minutes.
That's all we asked last time.
Did you propose an amendment for what you wanted to have it say?
I asked specifically in an email that all of you were copied on, would you please go back to the recording and include the comments I made? And the next email response from Jane to me was, "You can address this at the next meeting when we amend the minutes, and if you want to do the meetings from now on and take the minutes, do them yourself."
So I would suggest if you wanted to make an amendment to the minutes, that the way I would do it would be to come with the text that I wanted to insert to this meeting and say, "I propose that we amend the minutes by adding the following language."
I think Shenan has what I brought up.
But notes and minutes are different things, right? So I can take notes that are this long, and I might compress it to minutes that are this long. And there is some latitude there for the decision-making around taking the minutes. If you want to make an amendment to the minutes, I suggest you make the amendment to the minutes in this forum, which is your prerogative. And then we deal with it according to the process of the meeting.
So you want me to tell you what I said in the last meeting? That I want to be included in the minutes?
Well, I don't think that anybody...
I could go listen to that. Is it a long conversation or can we amend the minutes? That's what the topic is.
Stacy, Stacy, in your meeting to us, you wrote on February, Wednesday, February 7th at 10:37 AM, "Good morning. The meeting recording should be available today. I just tried to review it on Okemo Valley News VOD. It's not linked yet. Can you wait to finish details of the minutes until the video is up and available to review? I believe my email comments were made in or close to that segment of the meeting, but we should review the video for accuracy in the written minutes. Please let me know if I can be of further assistance." I'm not sure what that was referring to. And as Eve said, you have an opportunity now in writing if you want to memorialize that moment from last meeting into these minutes. This is your opportunity to do so, and I'd prefer not to waste much more time on this.
Okay, so Shenan, just for the public and to be clear about all of this, Shenan has these details in her notes. And if you want me to, I didn't draft it. I should have drafted it. Excuse me for not drafting it. But on Saturday, and this is what I stated in our last meeting, on Saturday, January 27, there were a series of emails between Kevin, Jane, and Mark that said specifically, quote, "I won't forward this email thread to them," meaning you and me, "because I don't want to cause any contention." Another point, quote, "I don't think we need a babysitter, so I don't agree with moving the PC meeting so that it's convenient for the Select Board to attend." Another point, "I'm not sure what happened last month that you don't want to be repeated." Mark, Jane to Mark. And also, remember that Calista is not our boss. And you then went on to discuss in these emails whether our recommendation is Stacy or Holly Morse, because my term is up, or someone else we need to determine. Have a look at Stacy's bio, blah, blah, blah. Campaign, campaign's over. Not irrelevant at this point. Then the last point was a non-Chair, Mark, said, "We also need to discuss our nomination for a ZA to the Select Board. I will speak to Jason Rasmussen, taking side note." This is him doing business, not as a Chair, Vice Chair, just a member of the committee, to Jason, ask at Mark and see if there's bandwidth for their ZA to also serve Redding. This is my recommendation. Others are welcome to weigh in publicly at that meeting." And then it went on to speak about the hall, rescheduling the hall. So when you have a forum of three people out of five and you're having these discussions about the Hall Art Foundation, the zoning, the ZA, what information to send to other members of the group, that's business.
So I can imagine the proposed amendments to the minutes saying something like, "Stacy expressed concern that there were conversations by email outside of the meeting and reminded everybody to stay within the requirements of the open meeting law." Something like that.
That would sum it up.
So that, to me, is what would be minutes rather than verbatim. But it's really up to you to make that suggestion for the amendment.
I think there should be more detail associated with it other than just referencing there was discussion. There was a lot of discussion, and it was likely in violation of the open meeting law.
Because honestly, the public has a right to know.
The public does have a right to know, which is why I'm bringing this up.
I think it's time to limit kind of discussion. Stacy, you have an opportunity to do that. In the meantime, there are two amendments that I have to the agenda that perhaps we can go over. They're really small. On the second page, on the first paragraph, it's just a typo. It should be the last sentence should be EB as in Energy Board, not EV as in Electric Vehicle. Shenan, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the only other thing that I had, which in this case, I think, just needs a little more clarification at 8:53. Also, the posted agenda should not have the Zoom link to the meeting. I think that the discussion was just that an open link like we've been using does pose some threat in terms of people coming and bombing our meeting or spewing hateful speech. So Okemo Valley TV wants us to look into providing a registration, a second stage in our Zoom meetings, which we have so much going on. I said, "Could we table that for a month or two?" So it's not that we shouldn't post the Zoom link. We absolutely should post it because it... But we just need to think about making it more secure.
That's all I got.
Do you want to table the approved or approval of the minutes?
Table it until the next meeting or...
Yeah, the next meeting.
I'm... It seems to have two months in between or a full month. No, I guess more, two months between having an amended minutes. I think that that's problematic.
I don't think it's problematic. I think I... And please excuse me. I should have put something together in writing to condense it like you suggested. I like what you said, but I think it may be a little more detailed than that.
I mean, if you want the minutes to reflect that you expressed your concern and reminded people to follow the standards of the open meeting law, that is fine. I don't think it would be appropriate to include extensive commentary on that as it wouldn't be on any other topic. You know, a description of what the issue is and that discussion took place, I think, is not inappropriate if you feel strongly that it should go in there. But then that should be in this forum.
Not inappropriate or is inappropriate?
That would not be inappropriate. But it would be in this forum that you would make a motion to amend the minutes by adding and then make your suggestion.
Okay, so I make an amendment to add into the minutes from February meeting. I brought to the attention several emails that were specific... I'm not thinking strictly here. They...
Stacy brought to the intention of the board that there were several emails, threads, between members of the Planning Commission that might seemingly violate open meeting laws. He would like the board to be more conscientious in the future around this issue. Just let's wrap this up.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable to you, Stacy?
Not conscientious. Not what's that?
Should be were.
Yeah, not might be perceived. They were.
Reception of hours.
Yeah, they were.
Okay, okay, let's all hear your spec, please.
25 minutes on 10 minutes worth of...
If you would have put in the minutes, we wouldn't be having this discussion.
Yeah.
The public should try to be aware that this is a meeting of the Planning Commission and commentary should be kept to the Planning Commission on this topic.
And keeping within the law should also be part of the Planning Commission's...
Well, duh.
The public's obsessed.
Okay, so let's take Mark's suggestion, and I would like the word possibility struck and were put in.
I think rather than making it sort of a conclusion, you are expressing your concern that you believe that the open meeting laws were not being followed. I don't know what the facts were, and I don't think I'm in a position to try to figure that out, but that's what you were doing. You were expressing your concern that you believed that. So I think that that would not be incorrect to say that.
Okay, so expressing my concern. Thank you, Eve.
Yep. Jane or Shenan?
Is there any more discussion on amendments to the agenda, the amendments, rather, on February 5th? To accept the minutes of February 5th, 2024 as amended at this meeting?
So moved.
So please.
I'll second that.
It's carried. Four reports, mail and email. Any mail or email?
Any mail or email or report? Okay.
I don't see Kathy Rondo online. Okay. Energy Board, Kevin.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mark, for the energy outlines from Cavendish. We will go over those at our next meeting, which is the third Thursday of every month. Saturday, March 16th, we will have another weatherization project at a house right in the Village Center here. As you know, perhaps that the solar array was voted a yes, and there will be information coming out on the front porch forum as far as a thank you for everybody involved. We will reach out to Becca Ballant and Allison Clarkson to keep irons in the fire regarding potential funding for future. The next step here, since it was approved, is to meet with Catamount Solar to make a plan of operations when this will hopefully get a boost from the Select Board as well. There is a grant that was put in for heat pumps in the library. Did you see that, Martha? Wasn't forwarded to you? Okay. And that's generally about what's going on other than plans for a grand opening sometime in the fall. Yes?
I got just a question, Kevin. I heard, I had a third hand in where refused to grant to help to get the solar grid.
Yeah. That would have brought the project down to $77,000. And because the kilowatts were figured on a basis of 15 kilowatts, was it? I can't remember. So yes, that's correct. It was not going to be...
I also heard at the same time that there was something else that we might be applying for to hack build that loss.
Bill Newcomb would be able to answer that question better, but I'll...
I'm sorry, I can ask Bill. I'm just...
Yeah, yeah. I should have mentioned that in this report because it was quite a surprise with the numbers that were put in. quite a surprise with the, with the numbers that were put in and then looking back at how they base their grants on the amount of power. And, yeah.
Was it the fact we didn't have, we weren't going to produce power or nothing?
We were going to produce more power. I believe that's what it was, Robert. More, more power than the fifteen kilowatts. I didn't bring any of my energy notes.
So we lost the grant because we're producing more power than less?
I think that's correct, but don't quote me and please put that in the notes that I didn't have the correct facts at this energy report.
I'll have to change this report. That's not my point. I'm just trying to get.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's something we'll discuss at our next meeting. And there may be available funds somehow to, you know, get us back on track to lower the price, hopefully. Bill Newcomb and Brian Callie are the main number pushers here. Not me. I can comment on that, but I won't. That's the end of that. That's it. Are there any more questions?
Thanks, Kevin. Zoe, who is right here, Ball is in, in the audience. Will you just make sure that you're speaking right in front of the microphone because I can't hear very well.
Okay, how's that?
That's good.
For a report, very quiet for February, January two. I can't recall signing any permits or receiving any permits during the, at least February. I don't think I did one in January either, so it's been very quiet. And one of the main reasons that I'm here tonight is because, as you know, your Monday meetings is difficult for me to attend, but when it's not on a Monday, I figured that maybe I should make an appearance. So one, number two, the discussion at the last meeting was you didn't feel you had to change your meetings for the select board, and I don't think that we ever asked you to do that. There was a comment that was brought up by someone that said, maybe we could change, maybe you could change them so that the select board could attend. But that wasn't a request from us. We'll do what we can as a board. And I will do what I can as a Z A, or, yeah, C A, put in Monday meetings I can.
I think I, I can comment on that if you don't mind. I, I'm the one who brought up, since we had so many resignations, basically all new to the, to the commission except for Kevin. And I had proposed, I thought that would be great guidance for us historically and for the process to have a select board member involved in this process until we got our feet planted and could move forward. So that, that's where that came from and.
Well, do you, at least this year or this month, rather, you're, you're up for renewal in terms of zoning administrator. Are you interested in continuing that or?
Yeah, if you, yes, quick, short answer is yes. I'm interested in continuing for the next three-year term. What I would like to do, if we can find one, is to have an assistant at some point in time during the three years that I can start funneling the permits to with the intent that at some time in the future, that person would take over the position right here in town.
Is that something that will be discussed, the select board being in terms of adding an assistant and are you thinking we're?
Well, I don't have, I don't have anything in mind right now, Kevin, Mark. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm getting to the point where I'd like to slow down a little bit, although the planning commission doesn't take much of my time, frankly. Or excuse me, the zoning administrator job doesn't take much of my time. So it's not a big deal, but at some time during, if I'm reappointed during the three-year period, we talk about someone that is willing to pick it up at some point in time. And the way I would do that is channel everything to the person, let him ask me questions or shoot and go from there.
Do you think you're doing a good job?
Kevin?
Yeah. Yeah.
Two churn whore. Two churn whore.
Did I get a raise?
And then, and then just to, just to, I guess, bring up what, you know, Stacy brought up. In terms of recommending Mark, you know, who is a, is a partner with us in all aspects of what we're doing. This isn't a coup d'etat. This is simply using these tools and resources that we have available. They offer a lot of zoning administrative services. And it, I mean, is that something that, that at some point, if within the three-year term, that you're not interested in pursuing that the select board can look into contracting because it's a per diem sort of situation?
Yeah. I guess I, I will say I would have to, and I think the select board would have to have more information. One, what's it going to cost us? It doesn't cost us much right now. Who's going to do it? And the other issue is, do you do that job correctly? They gotta have access to a lot of files within the town office. So a lot of things would have to be worked out and we'd have to have a lot more information before I could say that's a good idea or not idea. We've done along forty years pretty well or more, pretty well by having a resident of town do it. And that is my, it's my opinion and my preference that we keep it under somebody within the town that knows the town, that knows the people or somebody, because I don't know them all anymore. And obviously Kevin doesn't think I'm doing this job, so I'm asking a question. Kevin, do you think I'm doing a good job?
Pardon me?
Do you think I'm doing a good job?
No, I don't. No.
And why is that?
Oh, there, there's several instances in the past where, as a select board member, there's possibility of a conflict of interest, for one thing, as well as looking into a, a site that has. Okay, we've asked you many times to come up with a document that really hits the topic of what has actually happened. And some of it has to do with what are the records that are required from the state? You have that form, I believe. You said you were going to get it back to the zoning, to the planning commission and the zoning board. And nothing ever happened.
Well, the link is on most of the permits now. It's where you go to state to find out what permits you need to do.
How about photographs? Do you ever take photographs?
So not usually, if it's fully within the bounds of the zoning permit, i.e. the setbacks are okay, the height is okay, the building is approved and things like that, I do not take photographs.
Okay.
I think you're doing a good job.
Are there any more questions or comments to that?
I think you've done an excellent job, and I think that all of the links that you're questioning, that you're saying aren't there, have been there for some time. If you're, if you're investing in a property, applying for a permit, you, you really have to be very, very absent-minded, to say the least, to not find the resources you need to make decisions you need to do to get all of the necessary permissions.
Right, so if a permit is issued without an engineer's stamp for a septic system, for example, then the person can go ahead and build without that?
No, you can't in the state of Vermont. You cannot build without a state permit for wastewater and septic. And you, you just can't, Kevin. You haven't for, you haven't been, you haven't for a very long time been able to do that in the state of Vermont. I, what are you, what are you talking about specifically?
I don't want to, I need to sort of ask.
You don't want to get into specifics, but you're throwing Bob under the bus. That's not fair.
No, it isn't.
You, you agree it's not fair.
Very unfair when I don't have all the information that's required for a review of a zoning permit. And maybe it's because I'm negligent in looking for it.
It cannot, nobody can get a building permit for a new house without a driveway permit, a nine-one-one number and a zone, uh, septic permit on file with the town office.
Exactly.
Do it.
Exactly. And I've personally gone through this process, so I know what is involved.
I know.
Can we conclude the, the Z A report?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
I got nothing more.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Z B A, I, I don't have anything to report. Later on in the agenda, we need to plan for a, a, a site visit and a variance and conditional use permit hearing for the Hall Art Foundation. I asked everyone to consider dates, but we'll, we'll look at our calendars a little later on in the meeting. Thanks for the reports. Number five, we have interviews. We have prospective P C, Z B A candidate, Holly Morse, who I see is in the audience. So, folks, if maybe you would help me out just in terms of the, you know, the logistics of, of what's going on there, so I can see everything, but. Holly, so we, we invite you to just sort of do what you did last time, where you speak a little bit about yourself, your interest in the position. Give us a couple opportunities to ask you some questions, and we really appreciate that, that you came back.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak. I just. I'm curi, I'm curious. You said that you had a person who's leaving, who has turned up after three months. Is that person still interested in being on the board?
That person is me.
Okay.
And it was misrepresented on the front page forum that there was a vacancy on this commission. My term happens to be up just because of the way it was all placed when I took over the position in July. The, I was appointed to this, this position in July of two thousand twenty-three. I've only been on it for a few months.
Because you took over from somebody who was a three-year person.
Exactly, and I never once, and I publicly stated that I was interested in continuing forward.
That explains a lot, and I don't want to get in the middle of internal politics. I think that this, as a town, we have a lot of work to do for planning for Redding's future. And I've been very impressed with the committee of concerned citizens who have come forward and created a futures for Redding discussion group. That's, I only know of three meetings, but there might be more because I learned about it after the fact. So I've been very, I feel they've taken a very positive approach to looking at some of the issues that would face the community. And they're, and they have some very creative ways on how they're going to get information out to the public. So I'm much proud to put my energy in something that's very positive and moving forward with some of the issues that I'm not getting tied up with like internal problems. So I would like to bow. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Holly, for your time. Recording secretary appointment. We have, Jane has posted it in front porch forum. We've had no other interests. So Shanann Salisbury is the only person that is interested. I move that we appoint Shanann Salisbury as our recording secretary. Is there a second?
No, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, the motion is carried. Welcome, Shanann.
Thank you. I, just since I was in a, and I saved this comment, I didn't want to belabor the issue earlier. However, just moving forward, I, I am taking very detailed notes in my discussions with Jane. She made it clear that, like Eve said, that when we publish these notes, they are more of a succinct description of what is discussed in the meeting so that they're time stamped and someone can go on and look at the video if they would like further clarification about the minutia of the discussions, which makes sense because there's only so much, you know, room in the informer. I just in, would like to have clarification. I, like I said, just learning the position, didn't realize that all of the meetings were emailed out to all of the board members prior to being submitted. I, I'm just trying to get the order of events, correct? Not prior.
There's a, there's a draft.
Okay.
No.
So.
The minutes are submitted, you get the same copy that Calista gets.
Okay, so we typed the minutes up.
Now, that's not how it's been working, Jane. Why are you, why are you skewing these details? We have been.
Two years.
You, since July, the minutes have come out to the board to ask for comments or any of it. Oh, it hasn't been that way?
This has only been, this has only been, this has only been the situation since we have not had a serving chair, planning commission chair. The planning commission chair sets the agenda. The chair does not need to get input from any other board member. That is very typical, and that has never been done before. We've only since done that when there was no acting chair after Kathy resigned. So we've had a couple of months of that.
All these actions are very dynamic and they're skewed for one.
Okay.
There's been a lot of changes, and that's why I just wanted to get clarification moving forward, what the appropriate procedures are so that everyone does have time to review them. And I want to ask the board as a whole if you would want unedited minutes and the minutes that I intend to submit to the informer. I'm asking higher board.
Shanann, the, 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 the typical thing is you do the minutes to the best of your ability. You submit them to Calista. If there are any other problems, that's how we run our meetings. We make amendments to the minutes and then they are posted in the, as the record, as the official record then. That's how it's, that's how everyone does it. So that's how we need to do it. So we understand there are typos, there are mistakes. We are all human. These things will happen, okay? So we really appreciate you on board, and if you need any support, please reach out to any one of us.
So those minutes will be submitted to chair. Is that correct?
No, to Calista.
Just to Calista.
The chair doesn't.
And you send a copy to everybody on the, on the plan.
Okay, that's, I just wanted clarification on that.
So the only thing I would add is that in the minutes, it would be, I mean, the minutes at a, at a, at a, at a minimum need to include who was present and any votes taken, obviously, and what the dispositions of the votes were. Proposals made.
And then I have it following the agenda and time stamped so that the recording can be referenced.
Yeah, and if there's a roll call vote, who the people were.
So she's not to, okay, so for clarification, so she's not to include public comment? She's not to include?
I don't think it's like a transcript. I mean, I, I think, so I take a lot of minutes for different organizations, and I might say something like there was discussion about whatever, but I don't put down every detail of the discussion.
Of course.
So I might say there was discussion about open meeting law. There was discussion about zoning administrator. There was discussion about, but if it's not a vote or an action of the committee, But if it's not a vote or an action of the committee, um I would probably not put in a lot of detail.
But there, you do admit that we should have, there is discussion about a specific topic. You can't, see, I I think the disconnect here for me is, is we had an issue with the informer. Being published and not being published because people wanted a written document sent to residents in the community. So some of the community who didn't have access to a video or or the television could read what was going on. And when you leave out significant portions of the discussion in the minutes. And you tell people they only have one means to or two means, one be here in person or two go to the video. It leaves a significant part of our population out of the conversation.
No, I think it's reasonable to say, you know, there was discussion about, fill in the blank. Yeah.
Thanks.
But I I don't think you need to go into detail extensively on topics like that. I think if you have a vote, you need to have the the wording of the vote. Uh I like to put down who seconded, who made the motion, who seconded the motion, what the outcome of the vote was. But tha- that's about as far as I would.
Yeah, I I and and I, I'm comfortable with mentioning. The topics that were discussed and not leaving those topics out or some of them.
Mark, you're the chair, I think that's appropriate, I I don't.
I think it's appropriate, I think that if you look at the select board minutes, they're pretty lean, but they. They fit the bill in terms of recording when there are motions and when there is, when there is basic discussion, so um. I agree. I sort of felt like we were doing that, but that's what amending the agenda is an opportunity for. Is there any other discussion on um? This? Okay, number seven, recommendations for appointment to fill P C Z B A member term expiring March of this year twenty twenty four. We currently have uh, we currently have Stacy as uh the only uh. Respective member of the looking to remain on the select board, uh excuse me, the planning commission is Z B A. Are there any comments? I'm 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 happy to, uh uh I'm not happy, but uh I will go on record at saying. Uh at the select board meeting, when it comes time for nominating, um I choose not to nominate uh Stacy Gallagher. To uh be on the planning commission. For a number of reasons.
For a number of reasons, let let's, let's bring this together, Mark, what are the number of reasons?
I honestly feel, I honestly feel like you. Are always picking a fight here at these meetings and that you're not very happy here and um and that's.
I'm not, I'm not picking a fight.
That's my, that's, that's my thought, it's, it's, it's becoming hostile and it's becoming uncomfortable. And we have so much work to do and we have spent almost an hour on.
All right, I don't know if there's any winning with this. I do not always pick a fight, I joined this commission, wanted to be a part of this commission. Because I thought there was not enough transparency and there not was not enough communication to the community. As a result of my asking, requesting over and over again for transparency and communication. We had a number of past members resign.
That wasn't the result. The result was the select board said, oh, we need seven members. The the other question that caused a lot of. Antagonism, so to speak. I'm I'm not gonna go there, I'm not gonna go there.
So anyhow, I don't think I'm the, I'm the root of the negativity. I I I strongly believe I'm not the root of negativity, what I am doing is I'm holding people accountable and you don't like. When I hold people accountable, which is creating negativity.
Stacy, can I just add that? I would like to work with you. I try my best to try to befriend you, be friendly to you, talk to you. I I I have.
And I haven't reciprocated.
Can I finish? I have a feeling that cause I'm like a vestige of the last planning commission. That you see me responsible for certain things that I honestly am not doing anything to create. Antagonism with you and I'm hoping that. You want to be a member of the commission, not just for communication and transparency, but trying to make. The town of Reading a better place for all of us to live, that's one aspect of it. But getting involved in the nitty gritty, which we're not doing now because we're having all these conversations. I would like to propose, I don't know if it's a motion, let's start clash right now. Let's all drop all these preconceived things and let's just move on forward. Since we are the planning commission now, to do good for our town.
First of all, I I I would love to move forward. On a very positive note, just like Holly.
Just do it, just do it. Just say, okay.
You can't sweep things under the carpet, Jane, and I don't, I don't think you're a carry forward from the 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 past members, I don't. I do feel you you violated my trust when you had that series of email conversations between you. And Mark.
Okay, that's in, I'm saying.
So, so it's very easy to say you can sweep things under the carpet and they all disappear, but the root of the divide in this community. Is can't be swept under the carpet, we need to address it.
Belabor this.
No, we need to, we need to address it.
We're gonna go over and over and over the same issue.
Stop leaving me out of the conversations and communicate with the community and then we won't be going over this.
I'll agree at this moment, at seven fifty seven on this day, we're moving forward. And let's just let all that, forget it, nobody's sweeping it under the rug, it won't happen again. We're a united group that is working for a common.
Okay. Let's do our very best.
Moving.
Is there, does, does, does Eve or uh Kevin have any other comments?
I'm gonna cede to Bob who's got his hand up.
Yeah. Uh I I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, I just, we just, I I just publicly said. Kind of how I felt about this issue and I think that we're still in discussion in terms of. In terms of our recommendations, it's not an appointment, we know that that's what the select board does. I just want to see if there is any comment from either Eve or Kevin first before we offer public comment.
Fine.
Sorry, Bob.
Thank you.
Um I I I am in this, I'm trying to be involved in this group and in this role because. I feel like I have some skill set that can benefit the revision of the uh planning. And zoning bylaws for the town of Reading, um I'm pretty excited about working on that and I'm happy to work on that with anybody. Who has the good of the town, balancing the needs of the community and the needs of the development and needs of. You know, neighbors and butters uh in a productive way. Um if if you can. Uh assure me that that's what you're in it for too, I'm fine with that. Um I felt like I had to answer a lot of questions when we were looking at uh my appointment. I guess I would be curious to what you see the purpose of the bylaws are and what your. You know, personal goal is in in seeing the next round of the bylaws, so that's something I'm curious about. But I have no objection, I I really don't want to spend. An hour of my night, once a month, um talking about stuff that's not the bylaws, so that's, that's my feeling.
And I I appreciate that, I because that's the last thing I want to be doing too, um I have. Been here for thirty five years, I've lived here. I've been here most of my adult life, my family has owned the property I live on for a hundred years. I have nothing but the best interest of this community at heart. I have said it repeatedly in the the many months that I've been on the board as well as before. That I feel we should align our bylaws with the state. To eliminate any of the subjective. Uh discussion that has created a very large divide in our community. I want clarity, I want communication, there's nothing more than I would love than to have us get together. I, we could probably get through that in a week. But we get into these details of how many cars can be parked here, how many cars can be parked there. Bike racks, things that are, I mean, hours and hours of discussion about such small detail. Instead of looking at the large overall picture of the benefit to our community and there's like. Forty, what does forty percent versus thirty percent, ten percent of of living space for a a home-based business? It's, it's like, come on, let's just move forward, let's be, I'm right with you, Jane, I want us to be a community that attract. And I said this in my speech on Saturday, I want us to attract new investment, I want us to attract new businesses. I don't want to be a community for my benefit and my agenda as well as everyone's. I don't want to scare people away and this is scaring people away. And I am not the root of this negativity, Mark, whether you say that or not, this, this has been in existence for a very long time.
That's putting where I did not say that, I said that you 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 don't seem very happy on the board and that you're hostile at times.
No, I'm not hostile. I I'm confrontational when I don't think things are being done properly. So did I answer other questions or do you, do you have more? Do you have more?
Yeah, if I commented on your intentions or. Uh your background or uh any of that, it would probably end up being slanderous, so I make no comment.
But thank you for that, and you.
Okay.
Jane, do you have anything? And Bob, you had a comment?
Well, you already, you already commented, I have from the public, who, do you want me to stop, Rick?
No, I know, I know, I think now is the time, now is the time, thank you for waiting.
All right, I, I I want to echo from the select board perspective, not the Z A, the select board perspective. I really like what Jane just said in the conversation that has gone on in the last five or six minutes. It's been in our opinion, the select board's opinion, that the group was somewhat fractured for a long time.
How long, how long, Bob?
Oh, a long time.
Well, give me a good estimate.
Well, we had four people that had expressed an interest of coming on the planning commission. So we said to ourselves, let's increase the number to seven. Immediately, the planning commission said, no, we don't want seven members, we want the same five.
Which were functioning quite well.
Yes, because they all voted the same way all the time, with the exception of yourself occasionally taking an opposing opinion. Everybody else was yes, yes, yes. When the planning commission came back and said no, we said, well, then. As leaders of the town, we need to take some action, so we started seven members. Members of the planning commission didn't like it, so they started resigning until we got, and so then some of the members said they had an interest in coming on the board. Started doing just what all they just did and said, ooh, I'm out of here. And so we ended up back down to five, four members on the board and a vacant. Stacy was the only man left standing, so we appointed him. I thought at that point in time, okay, maybe we can move forward, but it sounds to me like. We have to move forward as far as we hope. So I would like to say, Jane, you made a great suggestion. And it's no, I can't say. But you made a great suggestion and all five of you can agree to that. I think that if you go forward, you're gonna have differences of opinion and you need to accept it. If you can't accept that, then you're on the wrong board, so was that.
Thank you.
I have lived my life listening to differences of opinions, so I feel I'm very well suited for this position.
Is there any more? Sally Bar, Sally Barn Grove, are you raising your hand from the audience? Oh, okay. Um is there any other, is there any other comment for this? Does, does anybody want to, uh this would require a motion, does anyone want to? Make a motion to uh recommend uh someone to the, to serve the next term uh on the planning commission, Z B A?
So Stacy, you want to be on the planning commission and the Z B A, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, then it's fair to say that we uh make a motion.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion and if it is not seconded, then it's dead. I'll make a motion to. Uh have Stacy Gallagher. A member of the planning commission and the Z B A.
I'll second it. So to make the recommendation to the select board makes the appointment.
And then the vote. No.
So all in favor?
You said no?
I said no.
I I.
You made the motion and then you said no.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's.
It's fairness.
Uh so either, I'm sorry, you're saying, you're saying.
Favor of the motion and I think. In favor of the motion.
Yeah, but so that's two and two, so.
So once we're starting again, you just, you just all just sat here and said you were gonna start for it and start.
So frustrating.
I just voted in favor of the motion.
I was so proud when you said it was like, fine, the Mickey Mouse are gonna hit your stuff. And now you guys are doing this, it's like.
Okay. So we, so, so. So, so we discussed this a couple of meetings ago that uh public comment during the meeting is a privilege and not a right. We do have a section at the end for public comment, we would like to keep that, but we need to keep it civil and we need to keep it uh respectful. That's, that's all I would ask, if we have another. Uh situation like that, then I'm going to make a motion to uh stop public comment throughout our meetings. Sorry to do that, but.
So what do we do with the two two vote?
Well, the motion doesn't carry, as the select board can make its determination about its next member of the planning commission for joining.
The motion and he said no.
Yeah, but did you all guess?
Yeah.
You voted yes?
I would have guessed.
I abstained, I can't. Should I say, can I vote for myself?
Why not? Why not? It's life.
That's great. I I I don't know if I can do that, if I can vote for myself, I don't.
But that doesn't mean that the select board won't account you, though.
No, no, I.
The select board will.
I think, I think we got a really good overview of what's going on and now it'll be in the select board's hands.
Hmm? Because you were recruited by the select board.
I wasn't recruited by the select board, Kevin, this is, no, 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 you are so misunderstanding this and if you're spreading this through the community, then it's a root of.
We're past the cutoff point, cutoff point.
Okay.
Point is, we're not doing that anymore.
The motion, the motion.
You just.
No, 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 meaning that we're not doing that.
Well then, why are these comments being made? Really, Jane, honestly, listen, I do.
Don't yell the messenger.
I know and I I really don't want it because I think you are making a really gallant effort, but I I. Heaven makes a motion, he says no, and then he accuses. The select board of putting me in the position, there was no other, there was no other person willing to take the position.
They appointed you.
Yeah, they appointed me, they appoint all of us.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, so, okay.
Hey, big guy.
Okay, okay, so this is happening, so the motion, the, so the motion, the motion is defeated. Um, moving on. Um unfinished business, Martha, welcome.
Before I start, I wanted to say that Mark is.
Before I start, I wanted to say that Mark is having a housing presentation on the twenty-seventh at four-thirty. Um, the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust will be there. Then they're, they're getting a lot of inquiries from everywhere because there's housing crisis in the, in the state, and they wanted to have try and just get everyone on the same page at the same time.
Where did you say it is?
It, you, it, I believe it'll be hybrid, so we can send go to the Mark office.
Okay.
Or, uh, anyone, should I don't have a week yet. The date, I guess three weeks.
Seven.
Today at four-thirty in the afternoon. So I sent you guys a bunch of stuff. One thing wasn't right, it wasn't planned. I don't know if anyone, I threw a few poppies at Ben once. This was the proposal of how we can get through the work that we've talked about, I think. Prior to, um, well, early enough so that the select board, they're implementing to do so can adopt it before January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
That's the deadline.
If it's, well, it doesn't, the work has to be done by then. If it's adopted by the select board by then, then the match is forgiven.
Sorry, January, so today, thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, select board has to adopt it in order. The match to be forgiven. And remind me, what's the match again?
It's around fifteen hundred dollars. So, you know, in order for them to adopt it, they have their, their public hearings. You guys have to have had your public hearing. And there's various waiting periods between all that.
We went, we went over this pretty extensively in our last meeting. We were very thorough with that to give us sort of a, a, a basis for what work we're doing.
It might be helpful to just. Repeat that, you know. Their, their uh, action is key in, in getting that match forgiven. So anyways. This is.
And if the match doesn't get forgiven, if it goes over the timetable, then what happens? Does the town?
The town has to pay that fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay. This is really helpful. Thank you for sketching this out.
Um, and it's very flexible, though. If we go faster than expected, we can pull things forward. Or if there's something we disagree. How this is laid out. Go there, says, seems very aspirational and a good goal.
I think we should, I think we should try to stick with it the best that we can. I think that tonight's meeting is maybe a loss, but maybe we can make up for lost time in April.
Well, I mean, I gave you guys some sample performance standards. I don't have coffee with those, I apologize.
Yeah.
What I love is to get feedback on them. Just anything you liked or didn't like. I gave you Wethersfield, I gave you West Windsor.
And Bolton.
And Bolton.
So just to clarify, where do these go? Where would you propose that these get inserted into the bylaws? And is it, is it taking something out?
It's an addition. It's not taking any addition. Before you were involved, there's discussion about home businesses. And uh, there was some language in there about noise, dust, smoke, et cetera, but there was no standard, it's just. None of this. Normally you would have some sort of minimum standard like detectable at the property line or something.
Yep.
You know. But, for example, with, with noise, I mean, you know, just say, no noise, it's detect, detectable at the property line. Cause you know, people move their lawns, blow snow or whatever, you want us to fix.
So I, do I have the, do I have the floor, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I jump in? So I read the three, uh, of the three, I thought West Windsor's um, was not sufficient. I like the idea of having a performance standard. I think it's a good idea for balancing impositions to the community, to the neighbors, while not squelching, uh, you know, development and innovation. Um, I thought Wethersfield tracked the statute better than the others, and I thought it was good that it talked about objective measurement of noise. I thought it was too low, because their maximum decibel level was a hundred. And then when you go to your little thing that you sent out.
Yep.
A chainsaw, which I have to use every time a tree falls down, is higher than a hundred. So I think if we were gonna base it on something like that, we'd have to think really carefully about, you know, so I have a big property, might need a snow blower, and I need a chainsaw, I may, might need to run an excavator uh, for some trenching. I might, so there are some loud things that happen around here. So I, I just wanna make sure that we're not it's sort of stepping on people's ability to do the work they need to do to maintain and improve their property. But you also don't want a hog farm to move in next door, or um, you know, something incredibly loud, concert venue. Uh, so that's the balance. But I like the Wethersfield sample.
And can we, as we're looking at these proposed changes, can we reference the state on a regular basis, so that we understand what the limitations are within the state statutes?
So the nice thing about the Wethersfield is that it almost tracks the state language pretty exactly. With all the vibration, the dust, the noxious gases, and I had that somewhere.
The only thing that I would, that I would add, I, I also thought Wethersfield was, was probably the best, but um, um, I thought that at the end, what was this, Bolton? I think that maybe it would be helpful to have some, you know, some elasticity in terms of this where Bolton at the last says, the zoning administrator or development review board, I would say that the zoning zoning administrator in, you know, in, in concert with the Z B A P C may consult with state and federal regulatory agencies determining performance standards for a particular use. Do you think that that's a u- useful if we're outlining all these things, but saying that there is there are going to be opportunities that something might not fit these parameters?
Standing with the performance standards is this is enabling leg- legislation, so the state is saying if you want two towns, you can adopt performance standards to cover these things, and they outline what those things are. And then it's up to the town to develop the specific standards that you would use to manage those things. And at the end, leave their, their offering, I forget which state agency, to consult. If you.
The Agency of Commerce and Community Development will be available to any municipality that requests aid in the application or enforcement of these bylaws.
So.
So what does Bolton say?
Saying we will help you if you have questions as you're developing these.
So I liked in Bolton's, actually I liked that section E, I also liked C and D that, that are calling out agriculture and forestry, saying that they're supposed to observe the accepted agricultural practices and the accepted management practices and pointing people to the state statute just as a reminder, you know, so that there's a reminder that there are other rules in play here. So I, I kinda like that.
Yeah, and that was also a, a note that I made in the forestry section. I don't know if we're gonna talk about that, but like agriculture and forestry are, are are exempt from a lot of this, but there are their own regulations that they need to, they need to follow.
For the agriculture, I was gonna ask you, are the agriculture and forestry exempted? Are they required exempted, or is that a choice of ours? Does the state law exempt them?
Yes. Not across the board, but
Okay.
That was one reason why I suggested that we replace, currently you have processing of agricultural forestry products in your regulations, which struck me as going beyond what is allowed by the state. That's why I was suggesting that you need to replace that with, um, the accessory on farm business language that might also sound a few.
But does that accessory on farm business language parallel the state's language, or it doesn't go above and beyond?
It's pretty close.
Is it?
Yeah, it's pretty close. I mean, I, I'm always happy to send, you know, got the piece from the statute and send it.
Yeah, but if you can, you, a town can be more restrictive than the state. In some, some instances.
And sometimes that's appropriate. I mean, sometimes, I, I don't defer to the state on everything. Well, I trust the state on everything. Uh, so it depends on the community, and it needs the community. I mean, it's nice that we have the option to tailor it to our own needs.
Being a Dylan's Law State.
Yeah, okay, mention that.
We can do what, what they allow us to do. And sometimes they say, you must do this. Sometimes they say, you may do this. Sometimes they say you can be more restricted if you'd like, you can be less restricted.
We'll forgive your grant if you do this.
Yeah.
But the, the forestry is a separate, that's a separate section from the performance standards, right?
Correct, yes, yes. People who write forest plans, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, have to follow what's um, called best management practices, which means the roads have to be as certain uh, slope. Um, there has to be crossings, there has to be, uh, a cleanup of the place and so forth. Agriculture has, uh, accepted agricultural practices, which has to do with, in many cases, nutrient management, uh, manure management. Um, if you want to go into those later, I guess that's what you.
First, I wanted to get a sense of the performance.
Sorry.
Thoughts uh, on any of these?
I mean, the other, the, the other thing that I think we ought to add, and it's what Eve alluded to, was like, if you look at Wethersfield number two, high background noise areas, blah, 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 maybe we actually want to we want to actually provide some specifics in terms of like site work, construction. These, these are things that are not, that are going to be high noise, background noise, but there should be an end, an end in sight.
And then insight for what?
There should be, these things don't last forever, so. When the house is, when the house is constructed, when the site work, the ditches, the grading is done, then um, the equipment goes away.
I mean, a lot of the times this is used in a operational sense, like for the home business, but I think one of the concerns a business that is going to be noisy all day, every day, or emitting something, humans' chemicals or something all day, every day.
So I think we have to make sure that the noise levels are realistic. And uh, it says in the Wethersfield one, it says during the nighttime. And I noticed that in your example, they had, they were, Williston has hours, nighttime is ten P M. Um, so during the nighttime, seems a little loosey-goosey to me. Seems like something someone might argue over. Maybe there should be a time, I don't know. Um, the other thing I was wondering if it's worth adding is it talks about any of those bad things which adversely affect the reasonable use of adjoining or nearby properties. I would say use, I would add, or value. Uh, so if someone does something near you that lowers the value of your property, I think that's important too. So when they open that hog farm. So I have a secret, it's a farm.
Eve, I, it, it, it might be more of a city thing, but you know, there's always the discussion about quiet, quiet use and enjoyment. Um, it, it would, would enjoyment, we can't be using quiet, but like, would enjoyment be used in, in this situation, or is this too?
Yeah, I actually wrote that down. Reasonable use, I wrote down reasonable use and enjoyment. You know, use and enjoyment together.
That might be something that, that is worth, worth something, uh, and just in terms of, you know, recreation, and when you're speaking about value, you're talking about, you're talking about property values.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, no one should have a, a home occupation or a home-based business that lowers your property values.
No.
If it's something super stinky or noisy or awful, and now you can't sell your house, that's, that's a bug.
Problem.
So if you wanna go as far as buying a decibel meter for about
No, you can do that on your phone now. I can do that on my iPhone.
I, I just didn't know how, you know, if reading was wanted to be as specific as some of these other towns in terms of you know, from nine to five, you can go to a hundred decibels from, you know, five on, you wanna keep it below seventy. That's, that's entirely up to you, whatever, whatever.
I'm, yeah. I feel like that might be a little tricky and restrictive, and also some people feel very differently about these type of noises and works on, on weekends or holidays, and not everybody celebrates weekends or holidays, so, um, and granted, the agriculture and, and uh, forestry is pretty much exempt, but.
Well, maybe, you know, so the detectable at the property line, you might, you know, say a standard, as long as there's flexibility for things like running your tractor or your lawnmower or your
Yeah. So the West Windsor one was a little noise excessive at the property line, which is a significant increase in noise in the vicinity so as to be incompatible with the surrounding area. That's so subjective. So that to me, I, I don't think is good language. I think the Wethersfield one, with all their decibel levels, is probably too much. Um, so maybe it's just coming up with a better mid-range language, so it's not trying to pinpoint decibels, but is more useful than that.
A legal question. Um, so there was a lawsuit in our town of a logging operation.
Were you asking the legal question too?
I guess Eve.
You can't. I don't think you can take that position.
Well, I'm not.
No, but I mean, she has information. She just has general information, and it's not about the specific thing.
I'm not giving a legal advice, but go ahead and get her.
Right, okay, so just that, um.
You're not my client, I'm under oath.
Not yet. There was a lawsuit in our town of a logging operation versus a private home. And the private home, so would that be a precedent-setting thing? That's the legal question.
I don't think so.
No?
I think absent regulation, maybe it would, but I don't think it needs to affect the regulation. So maybe the Bolton one is good. Noise in excess of sixty decibels, maybe we that it's not the result of occasional customary activities like lawn mowing. We might wanna add a few other things, reasonable property maintenance. Like lawn mowing, we might wanna add a few other things, reasonable property maintenance. Maybe the maybe the Bolton one is. More on target. Sixty deci.
Fifty is popular.
Yeah.
Maybe we.
That's really black.
I think we also have to be very conscientious about, you know, we live in a wildly dynamic, dynamic community where all kinds of things can happen at any given time and. Based on your relationship with your neighbors, if you do something on or near the property line. That disturbs them, then they can call for a complaint. If you have reasonable neighbors who can talk out their situations. Then you don't have that much risk of it, but there are situ, there are examples in our community where neighbors do not care for one another and.
That's why I'm sure to exempt, you know, customary uses. That are common in Reading, you know, so that that, so that people don't use zoning as a.
Right.
So um.
It's advice.
If there is a disagreement, or if there is somebody violating whatever. Regulation is set. Is that, is there an enforcement of it, or is the enforcement going to court?
Well, it I guess it depends partly on. How clearly it violates. What's here.
So is there?
I mean, this is, this is where the, this is where the zoning administrator comes in. If it's embedded into the zoning ordinance, the zoning zoning administrator. Addresses the issue, and if it is not addressed, then then there needs to be. A review process.
Yeah. I mean, it can be difficult to enforce things via zoning, some towns have a noise ordinance. Specifically so that. You know, someone's having, doing something very loud, you know, blasting without notifying anyone, no permits or anything. Someone could go up to them and hand them a ticket, say, you know, you gotta stop, that's violating our noise ordinance. With zoning, because of the enforcement procedures, you know, you have to notify them, you have to give them seven days to correct the situation. So it's not the most effective way to enforce against something like. An incident of noise. It's more useful for a situation like a business where it's gonna go on and on and on. You know.
It seems like nobody wants the decibel levels to be set, and certainly not set at sixty, which would be our conversation. But I don't think that any of the language is quite capturing it. I think West Windsor is a little not enough. Do you have access to other models that might be?
Oh, well, now that I get a better sense of, you know, what you're looking for. Um, I can look around some more and.
Well, can we more efficiently tackle this and if if. Maybe examples of decibels. Would be good for us to consider instead of looking at other towns, which, you know, we're really just looking at specifics, so. If a chainsaw is.
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty. Then, you know, maybe that's our number. You know.
But you wouldn't wanna live next to a hundred and twenty, twenty-four seven. You know, you wouldn't want a business to be next door to your house.
Like a saw.
That was operating at.
So somebody had a portable saw.
Twenty-four seven, so I don't know that its decibel level would cut it, and I and I don't know about how he feels about. Going around with a decibel meter. I don't know.
And I think, I I could just say that when you're thinking about something like this, that there should be a time limit. But in other words. That lasts for ten minutes or fifteen minutes, that's one thing. If it lasts for two and a half hours, that's something else. So I think you gotta have a time limit in there as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a large lawn, it might take you two and a half hours to mow. So.
Oh, easily.
Use.
Yeah, occasional customary activities associated with allowed use like lawn mowing. You know. Property maintenance.
Property maintenance.
One, you don't.
They vary. If you have an electric one, it's.
They're too bad, right?
Well, I think they have.
I think the leaf blowers.
Ninety.
Yeah.
Um, leaf blowers are one ten.
Yeah, leaf blowers.
Who's in the garbage?
But then I think we have to also go back to detectable from the property line.
You know, in terms of the the logging operations. Uh, there are a lot of people hired in the forestry industry, and they have to deal with the weather. They have to get in there, they can start up at six o'clock in the morning. On weekends too, and they're making a living. And I don't wanna see them restricted, and and forestry, you say, is exempt. But I I don't wanna see people complaining about um, that type of thing. I have a neighbor, or we all have neighbors who shoot guns, as a matter of fact, my neighbor was shooting guns today. And it really doesn't bother me, but for some um, some people it might, I'm not sure. I'm not sure it wants to be brought up in terms of. On decibels. But the demographics have changed drastically in the past thirty or forty years and. The culture is um, is changing. And I think we have to just. Like you say, talk to your neighbor, maybe. Um, otherwise it's gonna end up with everybody having a gated community here. And I don't think I want that. I don't know if that made sense uh, to anybody, but those were my feelings on noise.
Well, I think having a performance standard which protects neighbors from rude neighbors. It's good, because there are rude neighbors. But you don't want it to be uh, weaponized against customary activities. So having it be noise that is intermittent, that is customary, I I would argue in rest. Gun shooting is probably part of that customary, that is uh, you know. Kind of pertinent to your maintaining and improving your property. But as a running a home occupation, it's gonna have high levels of noise that are. Audible beyond your property line, that's probably not what anybody wants.
Right.
And and should be allowed to impose on their neighbors, right?
Right.
So I think it's coming up with an example that I I think. I think the noise is the only one here which we're really focused on, that is allowing. Customary in the environment, that's allowing intermittent uses that are reasonable. That's what we're looking for, without tons of subjectivity. I think nighttime is also a pretty valid concern, having. You know, the the difference between having it in the daytime and night would be huge.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, if I if I go to sleep. I I don't wanna hear it. I don't wanna hear anything. I'm going to sleep, frankly. Um, but during the day, everyone's got their machines going if you need.
What if you take a nap? What can I do?
That's on you, Kevin.
So Martha, do you think it makes sense? I I don't know if Eve had suggested maybe finding a couple more examples uh, of some performance standards? And I'm wondering if maybe like a couple of us break out just between the meetings and maybe do a little bit of drafting and. Vaness it a little bit, and then the next meeting, see what that working document looks like?
If, you know, if a, if one or two people wanted to get together, you know, with me or with each other, I guess.
I'd be, I would be happy to help with that if that is helpful, and if that's good with everybody else.
I would also.
We have something drafted and ready to work on.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to draft on the spot or. You know, make it up on the fly.
Yes, I mean, so you know, certainly say this a lot of time. A point of some.
I would, yeah, I would also volunteer to help out.
Then you have to go to the open meeting log again, but if it's just one or two of you getting together with me to hash something out. That's okay.
So I'm happy to do that, and I think it would be efficient to do that and then bring it back to the group for review. Are we allowed to circulate that? In advance of a meeting, or is it happy in the meeting? Like, can the group see that in advance of the meeting so they can think about it?
Advance of the meeting, you can send out.
Yes.
Like Martha does.
Yes, so everyone can read it in advance and be prepared.
So maybe that would be the goal, to try to come up with a plan to circulate and then be prepared to discuss at the next meeting.
Right, it's discussing it outside of the meeting.
Okay.
Can be problematic.
I I think.
And I, yeah, yeah, and I.
Closer, you know.
Yeah, and I would just say that, I mean, some of these, some of these documents took, I mean, you know, a couple hours or so, so if. If you're putting in a couple hours, few hours before the meetings with notes and contributions, we really need that, so um, we have, we have homework, so.
Um, I did send you a draft of the accessory on farm business section as an option. To replace your um. Agricultural product, agricultural and forest product process.
Can you point me to the section where this would, or what you're proposing would be going in?
Well, accessory on farm would be a new section also.
Coming where?
I haven't. Think of a spot for it, but probably.
This is new language being proposed in addition to what we have already, and. Is aligned with the state? I think I already asked this, maybe I may have forgotten.
It's all state.
It it is a lot, the state, this is another thing. People can actually do this. Whether you want them to or not. The state allows this. But the state allows towns to require a site plan review for it.
It's Act one forty-three, Act one forty-three.
I'm not sure what what, when they put this in.
I'm I'm reading it. It's on the website. It's Act one forty-three of two thousand eighteen. It's accessory on farm business with all the. Definitions that you provided and um, registration and, yeah. For people's reference.
So just so that I understand, do you see this accessory on farm business language that you're suggesting we could add as. Being. More permissive than what we have now, or more restricted than what we have now, or just a totally new?
Well. What you have now, I think is, goes beyond what the state would allow, so I would say less restricted. It's it's less, more restrictive than. In a way, it's more restrictive than just eliminating what you have, right?
And the section that you're talking about eliminating is.
If you look in the definitions.
The definitions are tiny on this. Right? There's not much, it doesn't say anything.
Oh, no, 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 the definitions in the zoning regulations.
Okay, so which definition?
Because there's no.
Um, can I share my screen or? Yes. So you have agricultural and forestry product processing. The processing of agricultural or forestry products for sale to or consumption by others. And then that's listed as a conditional use. Some of the districts, maybe all of the districts, I don't think all. Because of this. Because the state allows accessory on farm business. And allows towns to review it with site plan review. To put it under conditional use, you're going beyond what the state allows.
So right now it's a conditional use, and this would become an allowed use. Subject to.
Correct.
Thanks.
So it would be a step down from what you have now. But what you have now is. More than you're really allowed to have.
More than we're allowed to have, like someone could challenge it and overturn it? Or?
Yes, yes. To require conditional use review for something that the state. Says is allowed.
So I guess I I Eve was asking the question, and correct me if I'm I'm wrong. This is more restrictive. Than what we currently have.
No, I would say it's. Because we're, we are improperly requiring, as I'm hearing it, conditional use.
Use.
Review. Uh, which we're not supposed to, and this is what the state would rather us do.
The state will allow you to do site plan reviews. And doing conditional use review is a, you know, it's some.
So the. So although, you know, there's the example right in the next. Couple towns of someone wanting to have a big farm store and it having been a big deal, so we should consider it, so. Right, so that's. You know. Having a big farm store could make a big difference to someone's.
You know, if it. The state already allows this, so if their farm store or their restaurant or their business or whatever they're doing complies with this. I mean, I I'm not involved in that. I don't know what the details are. I don't know.
Right, it's very complex.
Yeah.
I I I wanna dive into this more. I again, back to all of my comments, and if we're being more permissive and we're extracting new businesses and new investment in our community. I'm all for it. But if we're being more restrictive than the state and scaring people away, I'm not, I'm not for it. I won't vote for it.
Yes. Less restrictive than you currently have, but. You know, Eve worded it well. What you have now is is um. More than what you're allowed.
So permitted, more permitted uses and less conditional.
So we really have to change this section.
I I, yeah, I I'm a big.
Cause it's not really valid.
Have to, you have to change it somehow to comply with the state regulations, yeah.
Well, I think, I think. If we have to change the section and ease it up a little bit to be compliant with the state law, that makes sense. I think we should probably think it through a little bit. I'm thinking about what two thousand cubic yards of food residuals would look like. That's a lot of yards.
This is, I mean, this is one of the, these are, you know, these are the state.
Yeah.
Pretty, I mean, I reworded things a little bit, tweaked things a little bit here and there, but what they say. As thresholds and stuff, that's from the state. I didn't.
Yeah, but it's, but I mean, it sounds like the only thing that I'm confused at is, it sounds like there's a lot of oversight and and involvement on the part of the town, even though the state. Is allowing all these things. I mean, when I went online, it said that, you know, these farms. You need to contact the town, you need to determine if a site plan review is required. If there are adopted performance standards, you have to apply for the necessary permits. Regional permanent specialist, you have to have an appointment with them, you have to meet with the Act two fifty coordinator, you have to post pesticide notices. All of these sorts of things. I'm just wondering, who is this going to fall on in the in the town? In terms of monitoring and being a case manager for all of this. This is, this is a lot.
Are you asking about the required agricultural practices or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that wouldn't fall on the town regular. If if someone was. Doing something that you suspected was in violation, you can just notify the state, cause it's up to them to enforce the.
No, but my understanding was to have, to to have an official accessory on farm business, you need to go through all of these steps. So I'm just wondering who, who, who seals, who's, you know. You need to go through all of these steps, so I'm just wondering who, who, who seals, who's, you know, who gives the 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 blessings? Is it the, is it the state, is it the town? Um and and how, how are we aware? There's all, there's, there's a lot of pieces involved in this.
Are there examples that other towns are using that are more or less restrictive within this framework? Or is this, is this basically it? Like, are there other ways you could do it that might offer more protections or fewer protections?
This mirrors the statute pretty closely, so I I haven't looked at a whole bunch of other ones, but I'm happy to send you the statute itself, so you can look at that, look at this, compare them.
And we decided there's a subcommittee, Eve? Are you gonna?
It's not a subcommittee, it is, it is just me offering to help Martha draft some.
Okay.
Send around to you guys, but that's on the sweet form and standards, not on the agricultural.
Think when we had our discussion, we tried to be as lenient as possible for someone to start a business on a farm. Um and like has been mentioned, other restrictions come in, many more that you mentioned. So I think the feeling of the planning commission is to uh you know, not be more restrictive than the state. Yeah, I mean, this, the it's just the top, everything's definitions on what I gave you guys, except for that very first paragraph. Um I have copies of this too, you guys.
Hey folks, we're, we're nearing nine o'clock and we have a few other things to do, so I don't know if this would be a good breaking point for folks. Eve, I I understand you'll, you'll do some work and consult with Martha on the performance standards. Um I'm willing, or if somebody else wants to help out with the, you know, should we ought to do something with the accessory on farm business and do something in the same spirit of what Eve is doing? Do a little more research, but tighten it up a little bit.
I just think it's with the accessory on farm, it would be great to have some farm businesses, I just think we have to make sure we think it through before we blanket permission them. Uh effects are gonna be on neighbors and the neighborhood and make sure that that's what the town wants, you know.
I mean, it's.
You're next to that farm business, is your, is your quality of life gonna be radically altered in a way that's not desirable? So, you know.
Well, I I I think we're seeing that in community, a lot of these farm businesses are, you probably wouldn't even know that they're there, but if you're putting in a you know, a sixty, seventy, hundred seat restaurant, that's, that's going to change the landscape, that's a whole different.
Well, so that's, I think we should run that sixty, seventy seat restaurant through this proposed language and see how that shakes. Like if I start a sixty, seventy seat restaurant, uh does that fit in here? I don't know.
I thi- I think you probably have a wastewater problem.
Uh that that's what I think we need to do is think of a couple of examples, because certainly we can think already of examples that have been litigated in two different towns. By.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe run those scenarios through our minds and through this language and see how that would shake out. Just to, just to comfort ourselves that we're not opening the door to something that we will regret down the road, because now there's a big imposition on someone else's property, or it's not what we intended, unintended results, that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
But yeah, we get five farm businesses, that'd be awesome.
I mean, personally, I was thinking that having it in there kind of lets people know that it is an opportunity.
Well, and it's a nice roadmap for them to follow, exactly. I do think it just, maybe what you're suggesting, Mark, it just bears more thinking about, is this the language we want? Do a couple other comparisons, maybe it is a language we want, maybe it's perfect.
So you're gonna do the beta test or the test of the? So my understanding is I'm gonna work with you on performance standards and work with Mark on the accessory on farm. And we'll regroup.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think you make a very good.
Thanks, Martha.
The state requirements, you know, if you if you wanna put in a thirty, sixty, hundred person restaurant. You have to jump a lot of hurdles with the state in order to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, um thanks, Martha.
You're welcome.
Um uh plan for April's meeting, um April first, um. Uh I am going to jump into this a little bit and I I asked for some people's thoughts or feedback, I didn't get anything. Um I'm going to suggest actually, just because we need a little more time in terms to, in terms of getting the hearing properly warned. I think that we should stick to the April first meeting for the planning commission ZBA like we're normally doing, stick to that meeting. And um just jumping forward a little bit, um I think we need to do a site visit and I and we definitely need to do a hearing uh per our bylaws, um it's, it's uh almost mandatory that the site visit happens like immediately or during the hearing, I don't think it makes sense to do a site visit during the hearing and break that up. So I'm suggesting that maybe Monday, April fifteenth, it's the week after school um vacation is over, and the only reason why I say that is because there might be some members from the um Mountain View Supervisory Union that might wanna be involved, because they have expressed some interest in terms of flooding at the school. So um I would propose maybe scheduling the hearing on Monday, April fifteenth. Maybe doing the site visit at four o'clock, which has to be warned and uh community members need to, are invited to attend. And then maybe having a hearing at six o'clock right afterwards, that's.
Works for me.
Yeah, me too. I will be zooming in the April first meeting, I won't be here.
Okay. And. Sorry, sorry. You will be here, okay, and I will make a point to be there, um and.
We'll have a site visit, then we'll come back here and have the hearing.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Well, I mean, we have to set up the meeting and everything, I would think that it's our for a site visit would be ample, Kevin, you've maybe done these things, do you think?
May even not take that long.
It might not take that long to walk up the river and down the river. Okay, so may- maybe we can change that around a little bit, I was just thinking in terms of trying to um. I thought about having the hearing at six, because I thought maybe it would allow people to get home from work, but it's also a little earlier, so um.
I think four and six makes sense and.
Four and six makes sense?
Downtime in between.
Okay. Um so, yeah, so, yeah, that's, I mean, that's another thing at the site visit, there can't be, you know, testimony and, but I think this gives us enough time, so maybe Jane, you can kind of enlist any, all of our help, because we're gonna need to get the notices out um to all interested parties, neighbors, um butters, um. Um we're gonna need to uh um warn it in the, in the um, in the newspapers, of course. So I think that that gives us pl- plenty of time, I mean, we're supposed to have, you you're supposed to have a minimum of fifteen days to warn these things, I think. I think having a little more time is probably, probably for the best. And then, did, I'm sorry?
Just one quick comment, if you wanted the informer, uh they will have to have it at the town office the third Wednesday of March.
Yeah, I think we want that. I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of interest, um uh so, okay. Um, okay, sorry, I had to jump, jump to that from planning for April's meeting, so have we, have we addressed that?
Monday, April first for our regular monthly meeting and then Monday, April fifteenth for the site visit and at four P M and then six P M for the hearing.
Correct, yes, okay, um, did somebody say something?
Nope.
Okay, um, all right, so uh Jane, just reach out to us, um Jane and Kevin in terms of how we can help, um other business, um, does anybody have any other business to bring up? I I do one, I one thing is, w- we do have a planning commission uh ZBA email address. Um since the last time, I have not um logged in, I have not used the username and password, because I just um uh just a little uncomfortable in terms of five different people controlling the email address, so um I would, I would make a motion that we have this address, which is only for official business anyway. Uh just to be, have access, um the, the P C chair and the Z B A chair to have access to this. For official correspondence, and we use our regular personal email when we need to get in touch with one another. Is there any? Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, is there any discussion? Seem reasonable? Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi, okay, uh the motion is carried, um any other, any other business, other business? Um public comment? Any public comment?
For the uh hall or the foundation of the hearing, rules change for meeting, debating, I can't keep track of when I'm talking, I don't know the talk, so. I would like to make sure that before the meeting starts, that the public has the opportunity to say something before we go into the meeting, there's pretty significant things are happening, so I would like the opportunity to be able to say something, I'm sure that people are too, reporting it to the, the, the media.
So I have a question on that, at the hearing, will the, the hall representatives be presenting the work that they have done? And anything like that?
So, so, so we all have, we all have an application for the conditional use uh of the berms and the variance, request for variance for the flood wall, we all have that. Um i- in our bylaws, if you, everybody should have that document, if not, I can resend it to you. There's a very, there's a script and it was, it was adopted pretty much in two thousand twenty-one. Um there is a, there is a script to um of how the hearing is going to go, so the, the Z B A chair is going to run it. And there is going to be presentations and there's going to be responses and there's going to be other uh uh opportunities for us to ask questions, th- there, there is a script that we're gonna be following, so in terms of having a, a public comment before the hearing, I, I don't think that that's a part of the script. There is, there are public comments, if you want to declare yourself as an interested um party.
I would rather hear the presentation first, before hearing any comment, cause I, I'm not up to speed on it, I will be coming up to speed on it through the hearing and I would rather hear.
Is there actually just probably a slip or then my concerns about the commission that they're going to do then?
Wait, are you talking about the April first meeting or about the here?
The fifteenth.
Year. So I'm not, won't be able to say anything before you guys start at the hearing, is that how I understand?
I think that's pretty typical, though, that.
Some of the meetings are like, okay, other comments, and then they go, the mute the minutes, etc.
On a zoning hearing?
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, if I can do it then, I'll bring it up at um what evening, because there are some people that at once need to refuse themselves.
You can. You can bring it up at the April first meeting.
Okay, April first meeting.
That's a big point, that's a big point.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Mark's muted.
Martha muted.
Okay. I missed a lot, sorry. We're on regular, sorry. What did I miss?
Just that um it, the public comment will be at the April first meeting versus at the hearing meeting. That we will allow public comment, remember we were doing it for a while in meetings, allowing public comment in the beginning. So not having it at the hearing meeting, but having it at the April first meeting.
But if there's someone who you think needs to refuse themselves, I I I wouldn't, you know, I I would probably I'll probably approach that person and talk to them, but I don't think you need to wait till April first, I mean.
Well, they should be in the public, everybody needs to understand the facts and that all those things that needs to be, you know. Need to be said. Also be aware of some of the things that are wrong, but very important, I can't say it in here and not bringing up our vehicle first or bringing up the slide board or whatever, is appropriate, I'm just asking you guys when they'll bring this up to some other points, that and go over the first of itself, and I'm gonna bring some others, where everybody understands.
Had the hearing, the chair will ask if there are any interesting parties. They, they have to visit right off the bat, they have to say they actually like to speak, they'll have to date off. So that may fall where you want it, which I don't know.
Yeah.
And then the ex parte also.
Right.
The ex parte.
Right. Ex parte, conflict of interest.
Right, everybody has to say they are.
Yeah. So that might.
There, there is a chance, obviously, all the neighbors would be considered almost automatic, they're a risky party, but I'm a future leader.
My understanding is that, just like in past, past hearings, the interested parties need to be within a certain radius of the uh the issue, or that they are going to be a part of a petition as uh an interested party with one person as a representative, so um that's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I think, I think that the case there, Mark, is it has to be by ten residents, and one person can speak.
Correct, correct, correct. Correct.
With one representative.
One representative, I would think.
Correct.
But it that those ten people don't have to be within a certain.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we have to look at it.
No, I think they just have to be.
Residents, no matter where they're located.
They, in the chase thing, they were the butters, right, or?
Well, it's automatic the butters, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Automatic the butters.
To be a butters, correct.
Yeah, or people within a certain mile radius, I think, I think it was set around one mile radius that might have been impacted, so.
I don't know the answer.
I don't know.
Yeah, we need to look into that.
Please, please familiarize yourself with all of these, there, there is, like I said, there is all of the, all of the information that you need to understand for uh hearings and uh how we conduct ourselves and what we need to disclose and what the uh, what the, what the script is. What the protocols are, so please, please have, this is, this is not fly by your seat of, you know, your pants.
No, 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 I know.
Yeah, everyone needs to be prepared. This is a big, this is a big, a big hearing. Um are there any other public comments? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I motioned to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, so uh so moved, uh have a good night, meetings adjourned.